This is a public hearing on our proposed 2018-2019 taxes and budget. A great vote on Beach Park District. Today's Thursday, September the 6th. It's 6:00 P.M. Joe Allen, would you please call our --
Commissioner Ernst?
Here.
Commissioner Engel?
Here.
Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Volbussen?
Here.
And Commissioner --
Here.
The presentation, purpose of the meeting is to review our budget. Any discussion, public comments, anyone else should be interested in the budget specifically. Mr. Kosky will present the proposed military and proposed 2018-2019 budget. Mr. Kosky.
Thank you.
As Mr. Kosky approaches the podium to address, just to re-put that in the record, there are three resolutions in your package this evening which by state law must be ready for the record and must be approved by you before the next and final public hearing. I've talked to Arthur earlier before the meeting. He'll present the budget presentation and then give a permission of the courtesy of what are we all entitled to record for consideration. Then we'll just familiarize the budget and then report the announcement of the next public hearing and then finally, subsequently.
Soon.
Thanks.
Very well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, as required by statute, it is incumbent upon the district to present to you and to the public the budget which we are proposing to adopt for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2019, which on the whiteboard is the display to your right. And as required by statute, it is necessary for us to go through this item by item, so please excuse the lengthy presentation. It's just something that we do every single year.
Arthur, you may make those stand over here so the audience can see.
Okay. I have one of my hands, so I can --
Okay.
I can read from over here.
Okay.
The first item of the budget that we have proposed for the upcoming fiscal year is the cash balance that we have carried forward. This is the excess or surplus of funds that we have available that are unspent from prior years, and that have been accumulated as a result of projects that are behind schedule or have not yet been commenced. And the amount of that cash balance being brought forward for the next year is $12,877,300. Based upon the proposed military that we have adopted previous to this meeting and which was sent to each of the taxpayers in our jurisdiction, and the military of .9146, we believe that our current ad-halarm taxes that we will raise are approximately $24,500,300. The delinquent taxes which we -- I think that's right. Everybody can see this. Delinquent taxes are those taxes that are not paid, people want to do the thing, and we customarily receive taxes that come in late on an annual basis. And this is an estimate of delinquent ad-halarm taxes of approximately $20,000. Now, the district is also the recipient of other revenues that are non-tax revenues, non-ad-halarm revenues. And they are comprised of a number of different items. First, we keep all of our funds in interest-bearing accounts, and interest rates are low, and we expect for the upcoming fiscal year to raise approximately $100,000 in interest from our bank accounts. From our park fees and services that we render, we will receive approximately $1,450,000. And from the special interest activity funds that is operated by the City of Boca Raton, we will receive revenue of about $2,150,000. Now, you'll see for that item, the corresponding expense item when we run through the expense numbers. We receive $20,000 every year from the school board for our maintenance of facilities at the Estrich School. And in addition, we have resources forward of $866,000 for projects that are yet to be built that are currently underway. And we are just presuming another estimated $1,000 of revenue that may come in from other fees associated with our operation, even such as operation of the carousel out here. So for the current, for the next upcoming year, when you add the tax revenue and the cash balance forward and the non-ad-halarm revenues, we will have total estimated revenues and balances of $41,984,600. Now, that sounds like a lot of money, and it is, but there are expenses that are associated with that. And as you see down the list, we see our expenditures and expenses. And these are generally estimates, but historically, the estimates have come pretty close to what we actually incur in the way of expenses. The largest expense that we're going to incur is the rate of the payment to the City of Boca Raton for their operation and maintenance services at all of our facilities. Mr. Kellerman is sitting here, I think he's waiting for the check. It won't be given to me tonight at my call, but we're estimating, and this is based on the city budget that has been proposed to us, $17,319,400. We also will have expenses of $2,46,400 for those special interest activities which on the revenue line you see is $2,150,000. Those are summer camps, credit programs like that, that we don't intend to make money from them. We just intend to provide them to the public at a break-even service. The next expense is the Meisner Golf, uh, Bridge Golf and Meisner Park combined expense. We reimburse the City of Boca Raton above of those facilities, and we estimate that that expense for the upcoming year will be $362,700. In addition, we pay to the City of Boca Raton for their recreational, technical, and supervisory services, and that are people like Mr. Kellerman and members of his department. And for the upcoming year, we're estimating that contribution to the city will be $879,800. We also, on the next slide, show an expense of general fund administration. Now, that is an expense that we pay to the City of Boca Raton to departments like the City Manager's Office, City Attorney's Office, the Purchasing Department, and other city services that are incurred on behalf of the district. And we anticipate that expense for the upcoming year to be $578,800. Both the technical and supervisory and the general fund administration are based on a mathematical formula which is comprised of our portion of overall expenses of the city's recreational department. We pay our fair share of those expenses. We have city capital projects that have been authorized of $4,43,600. In addition, pursuant to our leases with Florida Atlantic University, the use of the soccer fields at the university, we will pay rentals to the university in the amount of $320,000. Now, in addition to this pay the city for services that they render to us for operation and maintenance and capital items, we, the district, have our own capital expenses for projects that we find which we oversee. And in the upcoming year, we're at first is the golf course design and construction, which we have set aside $500,000. That's primarily for the balance of the design of the golf course. We do not have a line item in here for anticipated debt service on construction because we have not yet received the estimated construction cost, nor have we discussed with anybody the method of financing. So that will be something that will be upcoming over the next few meetings and will be handled through our reserve items that will get to the bottom of the page. We have capital projects ongoing at this facility, Sugar Sand Park, in the amount of $100,000. Routinely, we make such changes as problems with the air conditioners, replacing carpeting, and other normal maintenance items within the community center. And outside of the facility, we may be looking at bedding cages, things of that nature that are capital items, and we're setting aside $100,000 for those items at Sugar Sand Park. We have allocated $3,750,000 for the new artificial turf fields that will be constructed in Patch Reef Park. And we anticipate that project hopefully to be lifted off the beat sometime in January of 2019. We have a beach re-nourishment sinking fund. We have an interlocal agreement with the City of Boca Raton to reimburse one half of all beach re-nourishment that is done by the City of Boca Raton. And to make sure that we have money on hand for when those projects come up, usually on an eight-year cycle, we set aside $300,000 a year and then go into a special sinking fund. We have $72,000 for miscellaneous other capital projects, and we have debt service of $1,613,900, primarily for the debt service for the acquisition of the Ocean Reef Golf Course. The other expenses are general government, $1,881,400. That does not go to the people sitting around the desk here as administrators. The biggest charges are for our insurance policies which run in excess of $400,000 a year, and which also include reimbursement and payment to the tax collector property appraiser for the services that they render to us. In addition, we also make an annual contribution to the Boca Raton Community Redevelopment Agency as by statute of $1,342,500, which is paid before December 31st of this year. And that's based upon an invoice that we get from the CRA. So our total expenditures and expenses as estimated in our budget are $35,110,500. So as you can see, even though we're raising $41 million, almost $42 million, we've got $35 million of that going out in expenses that are there, that are necessarily expenses. Now, there is a delta then between the $41,000 and the $35,000. And what we do is carry reserves. And those reserves include the beach re-nourishment sinking fund. We have an operating reserve that we carry in the amount of $2 million. We've carried that historically. It's just prudent practice in operating reserves to carry a reserve of that type. We have $1,600,500 set aside for city capital improvement reserve for items that have not yet approved or authorized, but which may arise during the year upon request from the city. And that leaves a capital reserve for the district of $1,851,300. And if I'm correct, the expense, appropriated expenditures and reserves of $41,984,600 should equal the total estimated revenue and balances that we have above in the amount of $41,984,600,000. If any questions from the public offer them forward, I'm happy to answer.
At this point, thank you, Mr. Kosky. Move, Arden.
I have a question.
Uh, for the --
On the golf course designing instructions, is that a complete demolition and not a complete demolition?
We have $700,000 set aside for the, or encumbered, excuse me, we have a $700,000 contract with the designer. This $500,000 is the balance of that $700,000. So the demolition item, when we get the appropriate quotations and so forth, whenever we need to demolish, will probably come from the capital reserve item.
Okay. So there's nothing set aside for the demolition?
We have nothing set aside for any of the construction of that golf course facility.
The demolition is set aside or not?
No.
Oh, okay. Mr. Zian, questions?
Um, I'm sorry I didn't see it earlier, but in the new year, it's kind of a bonus, the amount assumed for interest earnings, $100,000. I think there is an opportunity to work with our bank partner to increase that because the going rate right now is typically, it's rising rapidly, and I think there's a good opportunity to get a higher rate.
I know that you said that.
Yeah.
I received a call today from our banking institution. They have a special on this week.
Okay, good.
And they are, in money market accounts, will provide 1.75% on in-money market accounts where we keep our funds all the way through April.
April of 2019.
Well, I had a banker come to me today and said if I wasn't getting 2% in cash, I can introduce you to him. I need to move banking relationships, but sometimes it has to be a competitive process.
Well, I agree with you, and what I am concerned with and always have been is the Roger's philosophy. I'm not worried about the return on my money, I'm worried about the return of my money. The highest rate is the Florida fund, but we know the problems that they experienced three or four years ago, where people want to get their money out and most of their money there.
Yes.
So we have to be careful and just be safety and soundness in our banking relationships.
So what we do for our, my company, is we invest in strategy funds, and we just sweep it over as needed. And so I think the opportunity is to look closer.
We've done that in the past, and it just requires a little bit of supervision, so that is, we have looked at those options. The other thing is, not all banks will take our money because they have to be approved by the state of Florida's qualified public depositaries, which means a certain amount of their capital or securities have to be set aside to cover, to guarantee the deposits. So not, a lot of banks look for large deposits from government agencies. Some do, some don't.
Arthur, who's the money, the 1.75, did that have to be new money?
Uh, no, it can be just us going into changing some of our accounts. So I told Gary, I'll write on the trust, I'll file back tomorrow, and I'll talk to Merv about it and make sure that it's --
There's an opportunity.
Yeah, it's an extra, almost one point, because we're making under, under 1% right now.
Yeah, on the banks, that's not unusual because most of the banks are slow to raise interest rates.
Right.
So if we're at a rapidly rising rate, these two forecasted increases are --
There were days when we were making seven, eight hundred thousand on that.
I don't know. 2% on $15 million is $300,000. I think it's reasonable to expect $300,000 for this year. That's fine.
From a budget standpoint, I think we'll hopefully exceed our budgeted amount of the empty of the plus sides.
That's right.
Negative sides, so that'd be good.
So if there's any questions on either additions that you want to the budget that are not included in this document or subtractions or additions of the budget, now is the time to --
I have just one more question. For the construction of the golf course, let's say worst-case scenario, we have to take out like a $15 million loan.
Yes.
Worst case. The debt services that we owe on this original are 1.6 million. We pay that in one loan sum every year?
No, we pay a trustee semi-handled payments.
Okay, so if we had to take out 15 for the construction, we would be responsible for that next year?
We would be responsible for it as we drew down on it. In other words --
So if we only take out 5 million, start with --
You may have to set up an arrangement with your lender that you make periodic draws against your outstanding commitment, and you gradually increase that over the life of the project. So it's going to take us a year to build the project, so it may very well be that some of that will carry into the following fiscal year.
Okay. I'm concerned with all those numbers and then taking out another giant loan that we're going to have to repay with only those reserves for next year. Obviously, we're, the following year will be a little bit safer, but, and then the redevelopment agency, that next year is the final payment?
We're still in the midst of doing our research on that. The law establishing CRAs is at best vague about when the time ends. We do know that we amended our original agreement with the CRA to allow them to use our money to pay the debt on their outstanding bonds, which ends in 2019. And at that particular point, we're still trying to determine what our options are at that point. I will tell you, the city's expecting that it goes on forever, and we're trying to convince them otherwise.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to -- Is that anything about the --
No, no. The only thing I will tell you, once the bonds are repaid, then it will revert back to what the original interlocal agreement said, and that is that the money that we pay to the CRA must be used for the same purposes as is, are required by the district for park and recreation. So the CRA could use that money, and must use that money for park and recreation facilities within the CRA.
Another way to look at it, Aaron, is the debt service is 1.6 million. That's repaying the interest and the principal back. So if you took another, you have a $17 million loan, so it must say really worst case scenario, $17 million.
Right.
You have, you won't have that 1.6 million payment until you draw it all down.
Right.
So it's probably a little later. And the other, you know, the hope on all this as well is you're going to have income that will be offsetting it, so depends on what that bump will make.
But hopefully not $17 million.
Well, it's going to pay for itself over time.
And let me just say too, that when we get from the golf course designer, the initial cost, it's going to be the cost of the golf course.
Right.
It will not include the cost of the clubhouse that's yet to be determined. So there could be in essence a tranche of borrowing for the clubhouse, depending on the size of the clubhouse and what we intend the clubhouse to accommodate and the function of the clubhouse. If we build a function room, et cetera, and that, but we will open the golf course upon its completion, and we will open it before the clubhouse is completed.
Right. I thought we were getting an estimate for the whole entire lot.
We have not yet given the architect, the golf course architect, a go-ahead on which option we're going for. We will do that at the meeting of the 17th, and I'm hopeful on the 17th. And at that particular time, there will be further discussion as to whether or not the size of, what will be the size of the clubhouse. Will it be a minor item, a larger item, or a function space? And we will also be looking at some input from C.B. Richard Ellis on the issue of the hotel. And if the hotel becomes a possibility on the site, it may well be that we could sell the hotel because I don't want to clean the rooms and bathrooms as far as planning out, and I'm sure nobody here does, and we'd be better off not being in the hotel business but just selling land for the hotel, which would go a long ways to reducing our outstanding debt. Those are still to be determined, and I think hopefully over the next 30 to 45 days, we'll have all of those pretty well set.
If there are further questions, I'll open the floor to public comments and questions. And if there are members of the public that would like to address the issues concerning the budget, please come forward, state your name and address for record, and the floor is open.
Hello, Robert DuKate, 5351, West Third Terrace. Thanks for clarifying on the CRA. I know that several months ago, there was discussion that the CRA payment would go a long way toward paying down the debt service on the golf course loan, but it doesn't look like that's going to be the case now based upon those comments that you just made. Also, again, referencing back to the golf course, it would seem like you're probably going to have about a $10 million expense, which is about 25% of the proposed budget. It seems like a big omission not to have something in there for that on the, on the budget. And in the National Golf Foundation study that you paid for last year, page 15, it shows 8.1 million for a golf course. It shows about 1.2 million for new site infrastructure, engineering, and design. So it's about $10 million. So it would seem like that's, on the low side, of course, their total, including the clubhouse, is about almost $15 million. But it just, for that amount, not to be in the budget, seems like a capital omission.
No, it's not an omission because we never intended to pay for it with cash. It was always intended to be debt. So the question is, what will the debt be, and how much will we need, and how will we phase in the debt so that we can fit it within our capital reserve items and operating reserve items?
But in the budget, you have a source of revenues, so you have like cash flow statement where you have money coming in.
We do not, we do not, for purposes of this budget, put in money for revenue from the golf course.
No, no, I'm not talking about revenues from the golf course. I'm talking about borrowing. I think a borrow --
That is not a revenue.
Okay.
That is not considered a revenue.
Okay. So again, I know I've had people ask me about this, and I thought I had no idea, so if that's the answer, I'm just looking for clarification.
It will be a debt item and be set aside by our reserve.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello there. My name is Edward Carboni. I am the tournament director for the former Allianz Championship, last year's Boca Raton Championship, an event that's been down here for many, many years. I work for the Boca Raton Championship Golf Charities, which is a 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to raising funds and conducting this PGA Tour Champions event. So here for a couple of reasons. Time, of course, with your discussions of the budget, but first of all, a huge thank you to the great Boca Raton Beach and Park District for stepping up last year along with the City of Boca Raton and Palm Beach County to enable this championship to take place, to be broadcast in 70 million homes domestically on the Golf Channel in another 140 countries. Without your support, that would not have happened. The tournament was a tremendous success and a very challenging year, where we raised over $270,000 for charity, including $250-plus thousand dollars to the Boca Raton Regional Hospital, a wonderful organization here near Ditterard Harbor. We had over 68,000 attendees. Did our Harvey, over sixty-eight thousand, uh, attendees with a lot of those, the majority of those coming from the greater Boca Raton area, northern, uh, Broward County and throughout Palm Beach County. And, uh, good news to say that we will be returning for the next three years. We have, uh, we'll be announcing, uh, in early November, a new title sponsor for this Boca Raton, former Boca Raton Championship. Our dates will be February fourth through ten, again at the old course at, uh, at Broken Sound. And again, I wanna thank you for what you, you all did for the community, the hospital, for the foundation, for this, um, very, very popular PGA Tour Champions event. Uh, we would like you to consider for twenty nineteen, some participation, uh, in the championship and a partnership. Again, last year was absolutely extraordinary. Uh, it was a situation where really you were a combined title sponsor with the city of, uh, of Boca Raton. So we're hoping to devise a partnership for, for twenty nineteen and possibly a few years, especially with the prospects of Boca National Golf Course coming online in the next, uh, in the next few years. That would include some of the assets that were part of the package for twenty eighteen, including pro-am's and, and hospitality, but really a very strong and robust promotional and marketing opportunity to all the attendees at the, at the championship and creating special events to promote the district and to promote this, uh, amazing new asset that'll be coming to Boca Raton uh, over the next, over the next, uh, couple of, couple of years.
Thank you, Mr. Carboni. Commissioners, if, uh, if you recall, we had originally, uh, an amount in our budget which we removed from the budget because of fiscal constraints that we're dealing with that, uh, Aaron's touched on. And, uh, while I wouldn't want to necessarily close the door on, uh, Mr. Carboni's request, I do think it probably could for us to, uh, maybe revisit that if it's necessary, but at this point, I would, I don't think we need to amend our budget. Now, uh, what's your, what's your pleasure in response to this request?
Well, if our staff could, uh, talk to Mr. Carboni and his, uh, coworkers about a reduced involvement.
Well, I certainly would be, certainly be receptive to hearing, uh, you know, from, as they develop, uh, their revenue source and their sponsorships, maybe there's some, maybe some measure, but at this point, uh, what I'm suggesting is we keep the budget the same, but not close the door, but, you know, we could revisit that at some point, uh, as we did last year. I mean, we did not have another budget when going in. It was a, a last minute appeal by, you know, a representative from the community, which, uh, I, I, I thought, uh, you know, it was a, a good promotional event for us. I thought we'd get a lot of recognition from it, but, you know, I hope that some others would step up and fill our shoes, uh, as we have plenty of fish to fry with what we're, uh, what we're looking at. And right now, it's probably premature for me to wanna support something like that, uh, at this point, but I, I would not say, don't come back. I would just say, you know, we'd be able to revisit, but, you know, perhaps not a good time.
I think, as, I mean, if they're gonna have sponsorship, to be able to have the tournament and enough money to, to have it, I don't think we should be putting our money towards that. I mean, you know, they needed, they needed our money to keep it here for last year, and we agreed to that. Um, but I, I don't think that is something we'd be putting our money towards, uh, for this year.
Well, let's, uh, let's leave it that, uh, you know, we would consider, but it'd be, uh, at this point, we're not willing to make an adjustment in our budget, but certainly if it, if the tournament, uh, needs a, uh, a smaller bailout, maybe we'll consider that. But at this point, I'm, I'm satisfied with the budget that we have. It was a good tournament, we got a lot of, uh, recognition from having done so. But I think that, uh, you know, we have plenty of other sources where we could use our funds without getting any thinner than we have. Uh, but, Mr. Carboni, I'm not saying no, but certainly at this point, I'm not saying yes.
Understood, and we appreciate that.
Okay, all right. Um, any other, uh, questions? Mr. Hane?
Chairman Robbins. Neil Haney is my name. I live in Dayton, tight as a weight thing of going to Boca Raton. I'm totally unprepared because of the talk today, but I couldn't resist because for the last fifty-four years, I've, um, made a living from golf and I've traveled probably all over the country, five thousand golf courses and putting in hundreds of, uh, computer systems, and that's what I've done for a living. And so with great, um, anticipation, I, I look forward to, to having, uh, Boca Teca, which breathes, come out of the doldrums and, and become something that we can be proud of. It was, I was delighted to hear that, uh, there's a hotel possibly. Uh, I've always thought that the hotel was a, uh, prime component of, uh, the entire plan. With a, with a hotel, we become destination, and destination golf is something that attracts a lot of people, otherwise we would not be able to attract. So, um, whatever, I'm delighted to hear that, that, that word did come up tonight, uh, a little bit. I'd like to talk to you about, uh, the budget too, if I could, please.
Okay.
Um, we're, we've always prided ourselves in being able to roll back, the, uh, the rollback, and, um, and we're unable to do that. We've, we've got excessive demands for, for the budget. And, um, in order for a person like me to be able to see clearly, I would, and I'm talking to the people that prepared the paper, right? That's the only thing that I can go on, uh, compare it with this year and last year, okay? Uh, I, I find that it's really not as transparent as it could be because we're, we're not able to, to compare it. I am not able to compare it to. Oh, is that what it is?
I have a sheet.
Well, this is the only thing that I have.
Oh, I have.
You have the other side of the sheet?
Yeah.
Well, I'll have to get that from you, uh, here in a moment. I'm disappointed that we would, uh, because, um, the, um, the appraised value of our property is greatly increased. And, uh, for us not to be able to, uh, stay within, uh, the rollback would be, thank you, would be, uh, kind of a disappointment. We've always prided ourselves in being able to do that, and, and you that have been here for a long time know the pride that we've had in being able to say that. Budgets are a lot of no's, and, um, Aaron, I've heard a couple of no's tonight, Ms. Wright, and, uh, I'm delighted to hear that we can't do everything all at one time. And so I propose that, uh, we initiate under the guidance and, and good leadership that has occurred here, but we don't have to accomplish. We can initiate and then span it out over a period of time. And, um, the, um, uh, the facility is a twenty-seven hole facility. It doesn't have to be totally, um, de- designed and accomplished at one time. Uh, we would like to be able to do everything all at one time, but sometimes, uh, the, uh, the community just cannot pay for everything at one time. So I, uh, ask that you pre, pre, please consider, um, looking, uh, at, at, at some of these great ideas, but over a period of time. Um, and as far as, uh, this man here talking about, um, stepping up and helping with the Champions Tour event, again, I'd like to draw, and I think it already came up once, we were very, very clear last year, this community was, that we would come to the rescue. We would, uh, breathe, uh, ongoing air into the idea that, um, the, the Champions Tour could reside here because we've got lots of good things and, uh, and no one's saying that it's not good for the community. However, it was very clear when we stepped up, the city and the Greater Boca Raton Beach and Park District, we came and said, this is it. We will save it one time and that, and, 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 so my request of you, please, that if you come and, and ask for more, acknowledge the fact that that was the understanding last year.
Mr. Hane, just one comment while you're there is that, you know, I've been on the commission.
Correct. And congratulations on your four years.
Thank you. Uh, and, uh, the, generally, we do go to rollback, and at one time that we did not go rollback is when we purchased, uh, the Swimmer Racket Club. Uh, that, that's been fifteen years, I guess it was. Uh, and, uh, with the budget process, you know, I, I wish that you could, you know, have done a fly on the wall as we're debating this with Mr. Calvert because we did, uh, go through the city capital expenses and, and there's some things in there that, uh, we have, uh, that we have to do, uh, that are gonna be major expenses like the pump and piping over at Gumbelum. Uh, that's something that has to be done, and it's been in process for some time. And right now, I think it's about a two point nine million dollar, a project if it comes to this that. And there's, uh, the, uh, the boardwalk that we, everybody's been asking for in the town. Those are things that we felt like were necessary to do.
Absolutely.
But to, to your point, uh, the, the projects we, in the past, do try to phase these things in because, you know, we have no other way to generate revenue except through our special interest, which is a minimum amount of money, and, uh, have alarm revenue. Hopefully, we'll be able to do, have an improvement on that when, uh, Boca National is turning a profit after a few years and contributing to the revenues rather than adding to the expense. So, uh, I share your concern, I appreciate, uh, your, uh, coming this evening and passing one of those comments.
Well, well, Chairman Robbins, I, I, um, I acknowledge, uh, what you have, what you have said. Um, and, uh, this community, we have to look at it as a whole. Uh, there's a, a lot of money coming to the city. Hopefully, if we, uh, we see that completed for the West Golf Course next year. So these, the, um, the, the persuasion of having the city assist in all of these chores will ease up, I, I think, a little bit, uh, next year when, uh, when we do get that revenue. So again, I'm asking that we consider the timeout involved here.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hane. Anyone else? Hearing none, I'll vote, close this portion of the commission, uh, commission meeting, and go into, uh, resolution number two thousand eighteen-ish, or one to adopt the tendering rate for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, which is pointed out by Mr. Kroski, is point nine one four seven mil. Mr. Gordon?
Sure can I read it, read the record. Resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero one is a resolution of the Greater Boca Raton Beach and Park District of Palm Beach County, Florida, adopting a tentative levy of adult or taxes for the Greater Boca Raton Beach and Park District fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, provided for effective date. As a matter of conditions in the resolution and as required by section two hundred point oh sixty-five of Florida statutes, the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen tendered operating note rate is zero point nine one four seven mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of zero point eight seven nine seven mils. And to the record, that would equal to three point nine eight percent. Required by standard, unless disclosed as an increase, which you do in the resolution.
My commissioners, uh, I need a motion to approve the resolution.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor of the resolution, uh, number two thousand eighteen dash oh one, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, Ashton Anderson. And we have, uh, the resolution, uh, two thousand eighteen dash oh two. Oh, two. Uh, uh, here we go. And Mr. Gordon, would you please read that to?
Senator, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Resolution number two, two thousand eighteen dash zero two is a resolution of the Greater Boca Raton Beach and Park District of Palm Beach County, Florida, adopting a tentative budget for the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, provided for effective by Mr. Kroski and staff, and provided for an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Question? Hearing none, all of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Uh, commissioners, we need a, a resolution to, uh, establish a date for our final public hearing. Didn't we decide on, uh, September the thirteenth? So, and, uh, is that something that you read into the record?
Chairman, I may.
Okay.
That, Mr. Chairman, I may. This is resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero three, which is a resolution establishing a date for the final public hearing of taxes and the budget for the Greater Boca Raton Beach and Park District for the fiscal year commencing on October one, twenty eighteen, and ending on September thirtieth, twenty nineteen. To the record, a public hearing to finalize the taxes and budget for the fiscal year commencing on October one eighteen and ending September thirtieth, twenty nineteen, shall be held on September thirteenth, twenty eighteen, at six o'clock P.M. in the community center at Sugar, Sugar Sand Park at three hundred South Military Trail, Boca Raton, Palm Beach County, Florida, which are the advertisers required by the law. No less than two and more than five days from the actual adoption date of the board today, which will, by the public, put a comment on the resolution establishing a final knowledge and a final money.
Senator, first.
Second.
All of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Ashton Anderson, let the record read. Having met the, in purpose of this special meeting, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
All of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like signs, meaning adjourn.